Good afternoon. Be starting this special meeting for June 1st, 2021, 1:00 PM. Be calling it to order. If you could please join me for the pledge allegiance and the salute to the state flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the middle with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among united
Thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be the approval of the special meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Edward. Edward's discussion. See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
We don't have any public input right via Zoom?
Correct.
And anybody in the audience can be speaking publicly?
I don't think so.
Okay, so I'm not going to go through that. So, public input, no public input. Next item of the agenda is going to be discussion and it's going to be under a American Rescue Plan Act funding. So, I think all the commissioners, I believe, either received an email from the county manager or it's on Nova, it's been uploaded on Nova. So just to let you know a little bit, we talked a little bit of some of the stuff that's on here on this document. It's basically just to bring up some discussion and to start the discussion of what's on here. I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to review it, but it is there. I don't know if you want, and I don't want to put you in the spot, but I think I am. If you want the county manager to go through some of these before we start our discussion? A little more explanation or are you guys good with it?
I'm good with it.
I'm good. Good, okay.
I'm good that, no, I don't need to say anything or I do need to say something.
I don't, personally, I don't think you need to say anything unless it's for the public. I mean, we've, or unless you have something to add besides what's already been sent to us.
Only thing I might add is, I was going to add a whopping $800 to that total for the UV light disinfection, disinfection machine that I had.
The question marks.
I have it with question marks, so that's minimal on the ground scheme of things.
And the difference between the 5.2 and the 3.1 is the, you're kind of holding that over to see about the revenue loss piece?
So, we haven't calculated that yet. That was just another item that's come up in discussion. So with the things that, in conversation with the staff, what we came up with totals 3.1 million. So you still have 2 million to do with as you.
But no calculation yet on the?
No, and I'm not convinced that we're going to see, the, I just don't see that we're going to have a great enough revenue loss to, because they don't want you basing it slowly, solely on the tax revenue loss. They want to know overall, what did your revenue stream do as a result of COVID? So, but we haven't run that calculation yet, but we will.
And you're going to include the airport in that calculation?
It's, yes, government, total government revenue.
There's a, sorry, I didn't know if you were going to?
Well, I was just going to say one more thing, but I'll have to say it right now.
Okay. Well, I was going to say a couple of things, food for thought, that we didn't have on this list, but.
Yeah, that mine was a food for thought also.
Food for thought.
And I have questions about this list.
Okay.
If you want to organize things that way.
So, let me just say, there's a couple of things too that, if you know that on our colonias projects, I think we just ended up with two, right? Old Arenas Valley Road and Phase 3 of Hurley. So Silver Acres was not, and Charlene's going to have to help me on this a little bit. Silver Acres was not on there, so there's some thought in there as to whether we want to go after, and I'm not sure what the wording was and if I'm going to explain this right, but thinking of maybe going after putting some of this money towards designed and trying to get that ready for a better, and it's going to be up to the commissioners next year as far as what we're going to submit for colonias, but trying to get some designs in there as far as water, sewer and so forth, to get it maybe up closer to it being approved for, for colonias. The other part to this that I've been looking at, and I know Silver Acres area is in your district, I'm not sure who has Tyrone, but?
I do also.
Do you also? And Tyrone also, I guess, I'm not sure how much in depth they're having, but my understanding is they are having a little trouble with their water and their sewer in there. Just to let you know, like last year they had, and I'm looking at some of my notes, last year they had like $638,000 in the water and sewer and reserve, and in 2021 the reserves are at $238,000, and there's still like $77,000 outstanding. So I don't know if you guys want to look at this, and I'm not, I didn't go into too much depth as far as what kind of troubles they're having, but it may be something that we keep in mind to maybe help them with that so they can get that corrected. And I don't know if Charlene knows a little bit more about it or not, but just food for thought, I do have to do a little bit more research. To do the improvements, my understanding, it's still, we're way out, it's like $6 million, but it may be a good idea, maybe if we're able to, to help them think of that and think of Silver Acres as we look at this list.
Question, Mr. Chair. Isn't Tyrone now incorporated? Oops, sorry. Isn't Tyrone now, isn't Tyrone now incorporated with Silver City? Or is it still part of the county?
I think it's, it's still part of the county.
Do you mean incorporated in the legal sense, like it's part of the town of Silver City?
Well, because I thought that Silver City had taken over Tyrone and operation of the water and sewer.
You just mean the water and sewer part of it?
So they're the utility provider?
I, I have not heard that. I thought they still had their own mutual domestic situation.
That's what I thought too.
I had a little conversation with Priscilla about this this morning, and based on that conversation, that was my understanding, is that they still are doing their own water and sewer, and, wow, I just lost that thought completely. Her thinking was, as you said, to design it and?
For Silver Acres?
No, Tyrone.
Tyrone.
No, 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 no. Let me back up. So I lost my train of thought, now I have it back.
I understand.
Right. So for Tyrone, there would be, they are, they, as you stated, had a significant loss in funds this year, and there are some other funds that we could leverage with this money to help Tyrone get closer to the 6 million. And part of that is that what Priscilla told me this morning on the phone is that in addition to what is coming out next year, that there is going to be an additional standalone colonias bill in the Senate that will also provide significant other dollars. And so her suggestion was to also look at all these different infrastructure pieces, water and sewer, and strategically figure out which ones we wanted to use this money for, design or, you know, something that needed to be finished. Charlene mentioned to me that it would make good sense to actually finish the North Hurley project on this money, but it might not make sense to do some of the others out of this money, to leverage it for future funding. And so as a result of all that, I suggested that Priscilla come on Tuesday and tell us what she knows about that.
Well, Tyrone, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that would be, and that would?
And the other, and the other leveraged dollars for North Hurley, Hanover, what else? Who else is having water issues? The sewer at, sewer?
Hurley.
Our, our Hurley.
Silver Acres.
Yeah. Right. Or the whole sewer project, you mean the colonias?
Right.
Because I wanted to come back to that as well. So I think having her come and talk to us would be a really good idea, because that's exactly what we need to do, is be strategic about this.
Right.
I think I expressed last meeting that I thought we should be extremely cautious about using this money for water and wastewater, since we are going to have a lot of money available through the Arizona Water Settlements Act funds. It's not right away, we don't yet know what the Water Trust Board rules are going to look like. I'm hopeful they won't be as onerous as the existing Water Trust Board rules. We'll see, but.
So there's?
I would hate to use this limited fund and then have that unused.
Right. Well, and so that, so there's not just AWSA, but there's future colonias dollars as well.
That's right.
That's right.
Questions?
That could be a significant pot of money.
And looking at colonias and all that, it would, it's better that we have things in the, that have been designed already, right? Because that would put us ahead of others.
I think that's.
That would have been one of our downfalls, that we didn't have the money for design of other projects. So if we had design on some projects, and that might even, sometimes when other money comes available, that would push us a little bit ahead. Am I correct in that?
I think so.
It could be, yeah. And it'd be, would they be considered shovel ready at that time then? And we can have something, you know, and I understand what you're saying, as far as the money coming in under that bill, but I'm a little, I'm starting to wonder, I have not heard anything on it or any updates. I don't know what they're going to put in, I don't know how long it's going to take. So that's one of my, because it's run through my head, well, if we're going to, if there's 80, I believe it was 87 million, but when is that going to be available? When do they meet and when are they going to do, you know, this out as to, hey, this is what you need, this is a red tape? Is this something that, red tape's going to take two, three years? Is it something that they're going to ease up on? So I'm a little cautious, I understand that. I'm cautious on spending that money in that area, but I'm also cautious as well, can somebody give us an update as to what, where they're at with that and what they're thinking other than this?
So I think Priscilla is willing to give us a complete list of all the water and wastewater projects in the county prioritized.
Projects and sources of funding.
Right.
Okay, cool. That would be really helpful.
So we would be able to strategize around.
And let me, if I may, Mr. Chair, come back to the Silver Acres question that you raised. We had a colonias fund public meeting about that project, as you recall, and it was not clear that the community supported a sewer project there.
Right.
I think it struck most of us as roughly 50/50 in terms of support. So it's not just a matter of design, it's a matter of public outreach and probably more meetings to decide what, what the folks want.
Exactly.
So I would hesitate to go forward with design on that project without first having the support of the residents.
And I agree, it just, that's why I said food for thought.
Yeah, yeah.
How do we, but how do we, my thing is, how do we get it ready so they can approve it? Because if it didn't get approved this year, and we don't do something, it's not going to get approved next year if we submit the same project. Do you see what I'm saying? And I'm trying to see, and I'm not, believe me, I'm not, not an expert in this.
Well, we didn't submit that though. It wasn't that it wasn't approved, we did not submit a project for sewer in Silver Acres. We submitted a project for road design.
Right. Right, but there's things to me that I just wanted food for thought. What can we do to get it to where eventually it goes down that road if they want?
If they want.
And what we need to do, whether it be roads, sewer, water, whatever. Did you?
So actually, we asked for a plan for a whole master plan, which included everything for Silver Acres, and that's what Colonius Board does not like. So we need to get it planned, and then you could ask for a colonias funding if you decided to go down that path, if the residents became in full support of that.
Thank you for that reminder.
But they don't like, they didn't like, didn't rank high enough based on this plan.
It wasn't that there was something technically wrong with our proposal, they just didn't like the idea of a plan.
So we need to probably find other monies to do the plan, and then you would be able in a future, at a future date, submit that for actual construction.
Thank you.
Or even design, or even a design, but they're just, it's just not palatable to this board the way that we're asking.
Remind me, so there was also some conversation in that public meeting about, there were some people who had just put their own money?
Yep.
Into septic service, et cetera?
Which always happens with sewer projects, right?
And is there some, am I correct in remembering, there's some thing that says everybody has to participate? And is that a state law or, refresh my memory what that is?
So the county has an ordinance that says that if the sewer is provided and it's in the ETZ or the ETJ, that, that 100% must, I guess tap in would be the way to turn that.
And all of Silver Acres is in the ETJ?
I think it is.
Or whatever it is.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
That would be something to really look at the map on, because it's, it's one of the three mile buffer.
Right, that way far down.
I think there was, didn't we ask for some of it to be?
Yeah, yeah, we did add a little bit, I'm not sure if that was because of the ETJ or not.
So one is, on this project itself, one is, we need to have more public input and discussion. Two is, we got to have a plan because the current colonias board won't approve what we want to do with the planning, so we need a plan. And that public outreach could be part of that planning process, and then we could go out for the actual funds, right?
Right, but I think the planning?
So the planning process could come out.
Is going to cost us some money?
250, he's saying 300?
300? I thought it was a little lower than that.
Yeah, about 300.
So that could come out of this money then, underwater and sewer infrastructure? That plan, planning process, right?
We're making, we're assuming that, as far as you recall?
I'm asking, I'm asking a question.
So that, that would be a question that I would like for Priscilla to explain to you guys. I, I'm not seeing the exact language that says planning dollars work for that, but in conversations that she's had with some of you, she seems to think very strongly that it is, and she's more of a funding expert than I will ever be, so I would yield to her for that.
So that's a question we could ask her on Tuesday.
Can I come back to the list that the manager provided us?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Showing the, as I recall, the look back date, the day you can start asking for money is in March of the current year, right? So all these things listed were incurred after that date?
These are all, these are all things that we have not done, it was just items that we thought would be, well, that are eligible expenditures for.
So the, the COVID testing expenses for C A N, COVID testing, that's future?
We, that's future, right? So we've been incurring those, that's, we're required to do specific testing, so what we did, and that should be CNA instead of CAN. Thank you, Ward, for changing that for me. So we have a CNA that provides that regular routine testing that we're required to do at the detention center, and it comes out to that annually.
Okay. When I saw that, I thought you were talking about testing that we had already done.
We could go, we could go back, but that's just, that just gives you an idea of just an extra cost that we're incurring as a result of COVID in the detention center.
Okay. The ambulances, why did I think we already purchased? We being maybe not the county?
So actually, Eloy reached out to me and asked if those were eligible expenditures for these funds, and it is. And so he asked that you consider the purchase of two fully equipped ambulances with these funds.
Can we, can we?
We did have a lot of money for that?
We did get one grant.
Right, total?
And then I think, if I remember correctly, the hospital still had to put in 60,000 for some other stuff, but it was one.
One.
And this would add two more to it.
So that would give them three new ambulances total, and all of their ambulances right now are at the maximum mileage, correct?
That's my understanding, that he has a very aging fleet.
The conference center ionization units, is that something you still consider important given the, I guess, the state we're in?
When Jason and I were talking about different facility needs, he did mention that we, when we installed the ionization units in all of our other buildings, we didn't, that one at the time, but he still feels that, you know, we could do that, certainly, with, you know, it depends on what you read and who tells you what. Mask, no mask, clean, it's on surfaces, it's not, it's in the air, but that's the one building that we did not install those units on.
So just for the record, at $30,000, I think that that would be, that's just something that we should do, given that there's a lot of uncertainty about, you know, different? Variants, boy, I am having a hard time with my vocabulary today with variants and that sort of thing. It seems like, under the circumstances, it's a relatively minimal expense for the value of being able to tell people we're doing it.
Are there maintenance costs associated with running a unit like that?
It would just be part of our regular maintenance, like we do the rest of our buildings.
I don't really know how they work, except they presumably take electricity, zap all the air that goes through the ducts.
It's just another, it's a, it's a component that's added on to our existing units. He didn't explain to me that there was additional electricity that was any significant amount to add those units.
So I have an ionization unit in my central unit in there. It's never needed maintenance in 18 years I've had it.
Oh, 18 years, well, okay.
18 years, yeah.
All right, well, thanks for that. Those are my only questions about this list, although I do have, I did have a couple more.
Go ahead.
Okay. Do we have qualified census tracts here in Grant County? We're allowed to do some things based on whether we're doing them in qualified census tracts?
I think so.
That'd be a question for Priscilla.
I think that's another Priscilla question. I've always made the assumption that they all are.
They all are.
But that would be a Priscilla question too.
Okay. I don't know, the census tracts well enough, but I'd be surprised if they all were.
So I can't answer that question.
Yeah, sure, sure. And we had talked about the courthouse sewer project. It was a little hard for me reading the 26-page NACO thing to see where it fits in, but apparently if it's eligible for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund or the DW, some other kind of water, which wasn't dirty water, State Revolving Fund, then it would qualify.
That's correct. And those were, yeah, when you read the NACO guidance, I think maybe that's a bit of a stretch, but.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
But projects like North Hurley, I believe, fit in with that, and any other type of water, wastewater, even flooding projects would fall into this. I did read that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner, hold on before we go on, because I can't see him, I forget about him.
All right, Mr. Billings.
Commissioner Billings, are you there? Do you have anything?
Yeah, no, I, excuse me, I appreciate the discussions. I like the way it's going, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hart?
Sorry.
So Mr. Billings brought up to me this morning that there may be things at the hospital that we should be considering under this. We haven't really had any time to talk to the hospital about it, but I would have a little bit more information on that for you on Tuesday. And, and that again is something that originated, that idea originated with Priscilla because there is other funding that she could, that she would encourage us to leverage to build on that. So, you know, the 2.5 million dollars from EDA isn't going to cover the whole roof, and there's some, some other things like that that she thinks might fit in there. And then I just want to mention, the other part of the conversation that I had with Priscilla this morning about this led me to, you know, I said in our first discussion about this, that I was really, really interested in a grant writer, and my thinking on that has changed a little bit as a result of the conversation that I had with Priscilla this morning. And she suggested actually calling this person a special projects coordinator, and in addition to the grant writing piece of, of all of this, and, you know, writing the grants that would need to be written to leverage, other funding, et cetera, is, she says that this is going to be extremely, that this money is going to have a very high administration burden, that there's going to be lots and lots of paperwork, documents?
Research.
You know, research, keeping track of deadlines, coordination, lots of, you know, even more than usual, I's to dot and T's to cross, and so.
Tracking expenditures, funding.
Tracking, yep, yep. Yeah, all of that kind of stuff. And so I mentioned this to Charlene a little bit earlier, she thinks that it can be included in this, and I think we should seriously consider using this money to fund a position to administer it. And then the other thing that we might want to consider is, there are some organizations around the state that are helping larger counties figure out what all is eligible, et cetera, and now that these organizations are down the road a little bit, like I know there's an organization working with Doñana County, has been working with Doñana County on this for a couple of months, of course, they have 40 million dollars to spend, but it might make sense to purchase by contract some outside expertise to just help us make sure that we are, you know, taking full advantage of that knowledge that they've gained, that Priscilla may or may not have. And she and I talked about that a little bit as well. And, you know, I think the bottom line is, at this point, you know, all of the work on the ARP is in addition, is in addition to the work that Priscilla was already doing, and I think any amount of help we can give her on this is, would be greatly appreciated and probably very valuable to the rest of the county.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Hold on, hold it. So my question would be, so we bring in a grant writer, for example?
Special projects coordinator.
Or a special projects coordinator, and we have funding depending on what that salary is, but then to me, I mean, I don't know if you want to bring in contract wise, and then once that contract ends, what do we do? Or if you bring in another position into the county, you know, usually money, grant money runs out, but expenses are still there, reports are still there. I don't know, I mean, my thing is, how do we keep funding it in future?
Well, I think we start out with a contract position, for sure.
Contract position?
Yep.
Because, and I'm just throwing this, just my thoughts is, because eventually if this contract runs out, you know, now are we going to turn around and throw the burden on somebody else because these grants don't just close out with our contract? Especially if you get a grant, if you bring in somebody for a year and are grants for two, three years, where does that go from there?
I think we have to look at that, you know, if the life of the money is, so I think the expenditure, remind me what the expenditure deadline is? Um, so I think the expenditure, remind me what the expenditure deadline is?
So all funds must be incurred and obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and must be expended, and all the work must be completed by December thirty-first, thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So I think we build into that, that, you know, if we're talking about contract, a contractor for this money, then we contract them for the life of the money, which is through the end of December twenty twenty-six.
Mr. Son, that's what you thought.
Well, part of the, your question was part of my question. Because, uh, I know that grants, other than governmental grants, uh, lots of times, uh, you can, they, they have administration built into them. So, you know, a, a part of the grant money would be administration, which would be... But this would be the procurement of grants outside of government. And i- if anybody has studied grants, there are many, many, many. All you have to do is Google grants, and it's, it's a lot. So there is a possibility of us getting grants from other entities. You know, a lot of private corporations, instead of paying taxes, they put out grants. So, uh, and this is one of the things that I had brought up before, about having somebody to manage our projects. And this might be the opportune time to have it done. And I agree with Commissioner Edwards. Uh, we could probably use part of this money to pay for the grant writers for the duration of the, of the grant. So it would give us time to see whether we could sustain a, a grant writer on the county payroll. Because when we're thinking about helping Priscilla, we're just thinking about the county not providing them with a grant writer, right?
Correct. We're talking about helping ourselves so that she doesn't have to as much.
Yes. And, and also, I, I see the possibilities of, um, grants being tied to some of our special projects, such as the trails. Because it is such a hot topic right now, and not just in our county. So there would be probably possibilities there, so, yeah.
Uh, so I'd like to build on that, I guess. Uh, an alternative that I was thinking of is, uh, that this position would be shared with the other members of the Southwest COG. That sort of conflicts with your idea that we could use the position for other grant county purposes, also. Uh, and so I have a question for Charlene. Do you see a problem funding a position with the ARP money that is partially to administer the ARP-related projects, but is partially to accomplish other county objectives? Yeah, I know, in the case of healthcare workers and law enforcement, you can cover all their salaries if what they're doing is primarily working on COVID-related things. But this is a different situation than that, and I don't know if you've seen language that would instruct us.
I have not read any language, um, around that, other than it's exactly like you described. Um, when you start talking about personnel, it's related, COVID-related work, um, those sort of things. So I don't have an answer for you right this moment. Um, that's something I'd like to ponder a little, because I think that brings up, um, probably a legitimate question that we would need to be, that would need to be answered. Because it seems to me, um, even from the very beginning, very broad guidance that was given, this is definitely COVID-related, it's in response to COVID. Um, that might be a stretch. But let me, let me think about that one a little more and see if I can find some additional. Um, there is a, we can submit questions to NACO. They've been very good about trying to answer questions and doing some regular, um, um, updates to their member counties. So perhaps that's a question I could pose that direction, as well as to Priscilla.
So a couple things. Based on the conversation that I had with Priscilla today, um, the special projects coordinator for the ARP money would take all their time. Like, she's thinking that...
Just grant counties?
Yeah, just Grant County, that's one thing.
Really?
Second thing is, um, NCFC has applied for three grant writers for the COG area, for the four county area.
NCFC?
NCFC, National Center for Frontier Communities.
Thank you.
Um, to do the broader regional grant-writing-related stuff. And Priscilla, um, was part of that process. So we might not even need to do that, if NCFC is able to fund that. Because they're looking at how to leverage this, not, not the five-point-two million that we got, but other money that the legislative delegation got at the state level to do regional, um, related things that essentially, we wouldn't have to spend our pot of money to do.
Cool.
It's different money.
Cool.
So just one thing that Misha reminded me. We do have grant-funded employees. Um, for example, Cory Caminos are grant-funded employees. We've had other grant-funded employees. They sign an at-will, a, a specific at-will agreement saying that they understand that their position is funded with grant funds, and once those grant funds are expended, or that grant is over, you no longer, um, have a job, basically. So that's something else for you to consider. We, we do have positions that are funded that way, so.
Yeah, might, and I understand that, might contribute, you know, keeping somebody through when everything's exhausted and the final report is submitted, because, I mean, your county employees already have a full, full plate. And for us to start piecing it together and saying, well, here you go, you know, Chris, here you go, you're going to have to take this on, because we don't have that. You know, the other thing, if we're going to go after, and I understand what, and Commissioner Salas, and I agree with him, we should have somebody for special projects and, and looking at those special, special projects. I totally agree with him. But I think, too, where we sometimes fail is, we get a grant writer, all of a sudden, their job description goes beyond where they get too many, I guess, uh...
Duties.
Yeah, they get too many duties, and all of a sudden, we don't have a grant writer. We have somebody just chasing projects. So, I mean, those are the things we have to be real careful with, too. If we're going to get a, a, a special projects coordinator, and they're going to write grants, administer grants, then that's what they should do.
Well, and I think, you know, our job is to say to the administration, we would like a special projects coordinator to do this, this, and this, and, um, we'd like them to be employed through the final report. And, um, uh, you know, we'd like to figure out if that's something that we can support with the county budget going beyond that. And let them figure out how to make that happen.
Just for my estimating purposes, what do we think this, uh, special projects coordinator position would run with benefits for a year? I guess it's a contract position we were talking about, but I'm more comfortable with a staff position with that kind of clause that Misha and Charlene described. So there would be benefits. Sixty, seventy thousand, after benefits, payroll taxes?
I would imagine more.
So I think a position probably that's thirty-eight thousand a year, probably by the time you do everything benefits on, it's probably up in the seventies, then.
Right.
So if you're going to bring them in, you know, it's, yeah, it could be expensive.
Right. I mean, I don't know what your evaluation of it is, but I, to me, it's not a high-level management position. It's a bookkeeping position.
Wow, I'm insulted.
I'm the bookkeeper, I'm the one that should be insulted.
I don't, I wouldn't even, I don't know what a guess would be, I really don't know.
What is, what is, like, an administrative starting? So to me, like, forty thousand dollars plus benefits seems about right.
Good.
So we're looking at somewhere around sixty-five thousand dollars with benefits, right?
Probably a little more, because we pay a hundred percent of benefits. So, I mean, if it's someone who had family coverage, there's twenty-four thousand dollars a year, right there, just in health insurance.
Right. That's what I was thinking about, forty thousand plus twenty-five thousand dollars in benefits, plus FICA match, I didn't have that in there.
Plus P E R E.
You're looking at about seventy-some, I think.
So, but here's the thing I think we have to think about. Um, when was the last time we had a special projects coordinator or a grant writer on staff at Grant County? Do you have any idea?
Not, to my knowledge, not since we've, when I say we, we're the ones that have been doing the majority of the grant writing. And that's simple grants, not anything that takes a tremendous amount of research.
So if we, you know, I, I agree with Javier, you know, there's... I think we're leaving millions of dollars on the table, because we haven't got the capacity that we need to, to leverage those funds. And, you know, if a seventy thousand dollar a year person gets us that money, even if two seventy thousand dollar people a year, you know, bring in ten million dollars a year in grants, and we could certainly set it up that way, in terms of, you know, your, your job duties mean that you need to apply for, um, you know, X millions of dollars worth of grants a year, and, you know, receive a certain percentage of them, or whatever. But if, you know, if they're bringing in millions of dollars of the grants, it certainly would be worth it to me.
I need to clarify something, if I might. I was referring to the special projects coordinator, right? The firm, when I said bookkeeping, I was not talking about the grant writer, who has to go out and beat the bushes and understand rules and stuff like that.
Well, we kind of melded the two.
But we shouldn't, right?
Well, we might be right about that.
That's why I want to clarify. To me, they have to be distinct. We can pay for the one, the special projects coordinator, with this funding. We cannot pay for the other with this funding. Unless Charlene finds out different, I, but I feel, you know, pretty close to sure that we can't.
Well...
And sounds like she's nodding.
So I've, I've been skimming through, uh, the interim rule very quickly, mind you. Um, I, I think I, I agree with Harry. It very much says, you know, any, any staff positions are, um, time is spent mitigating responding to COVID-nineteen public health emergencies. So I think you would have to be very cautious about that position being in response to. Um, and that, you know, any grants that you're searching for are related to how we responded to this ongoing pandemic. Um, but I'm still, like I said, I'm just skimming through it, but I, I think I would be overly cautious about how broad this position became.
Well, when, when I brought this up initially, thirty minutes ago, or whenever, I don't know. What I said about it was, um, you know, the administrative duties, the implementation, the oversight, you know, all that kind of stuff, and grants related to leveraging this money. Now, we, we did expand that conversation, and I think we should talk about that, um, you know, expanded conversation, which is why, just a minute ago, I said even two people would be worth it to me. But if we started out with one, and what they were doing was administering the ARP money and getting any grants related to that money, leveraging further funds for that money, we would be within the parameters, correct?
And the other, the other key thing that I see throughout this is, add the negative economic impacts. So if you were able to target funds that, um, you weren't otherwise able to do because you had a negative economic impact, I think, I think there's some of your broad language there.
I think, I think, I, I totally agree with you that we would have to be careful. But I think that it's a, I think it's a great platform to get started and expand on. And I think even if we had a two-person, you know, department eventually, that it would be well worth our investment, I would say.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Salas?
And the, the reason that I say this is that, that my brother was a, a contract grant writer. And he earned his salary by, uh, used a two-percent rider on a grant. So, and he contracted out to various places. And that was his job, it was his own company, that he did that. And a, a grant writer can quickly make up their salary. But it has to be somebody that's very dedicated. Uh, now, I don't know a situation right now of, uh, contract grant writers. Uh, but one thing I would want to say is, I would very much want to bring somebody in with the expertise, as you said, Donjana had. And even if that initially costs us some money, before we can access the grant.
So one thing that I think is also really important to think about in this conversation is that two percent is never, I've never seen a grant that the grant itself was willing to pay the two percent.
I agree.
So we would have to budget the two percent, um, you know...
Or salaries, some percent.
Yeah. But some incentive, you know, and guidelines, I think, are critically important. And I'll get that information about who Donjana County is using.
So Renee looked up the, uh, grant writer position for Donjana County, and their salary range is forty to sixty-five.
Which is what I thought.
For the grant writer. I agree, that's more responsibility than the special projects coordinator.
It's a very specialized position.
Well, in that case, they'll only take one good grant to make up their salary.
Yes.
Again, I don't know, I feel like we're...
Right.
We're mixing...
We are mixing a little bit.
The, the, one other thing that I want to...
But I'm clear on where I started out and where we should finish.
As you read some of the parameters of the grant, it really leaves open a very broad stroke of your pen. Because it's COVID-related, you know, you could tie so many things to COVID. Every outdoor opportunity, because now they're going to be outdoors instead of enclosed spaces, uh, economics, and it, it is going to be a very broad stroke that we're going to be able to use with that. So it would be great to know which way the wind is blowing, so to speak, with somebody that's, that's a little bit ahead of us.
Got some expertise, agreed.
So if I understood, both of you are supporting the idea of, of hiring a group, like, or maybe the same group that is providing consultation to Donjana? Is that right?
I would really like to explore what possibilities there are. You know, maybe a, 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 a contract or something.
So, let's say we all agree we are going to do that. What is the rest of today's discussion? Because I, I don't see much purpose in having it if we're then going to bring in experts to make sure we have a better discussion.
Well, I, I think this whole discussion is very valid, because, uh, we're looking at possibilities. Now, what somebody with expertise would say, you know, here is the range of possibilities, here's what we see has already been done, this is probably what you need to do.
Well, I think it's quite possible that the organization that's working with Donjana County would actually serve as the contracted special projects coordinator as well. They are a grant-writing and special projects coordinating firm.
Well, presumably, we need to put out an RFP for it, right? So we should, we would include that as one of the services we're looking for, if that's true.
Right.
Okay, I mean, I, so I'm fine considering that, looking into it. I think exploring is the word you used, I would support exploring that. And I don't oppose a freewheeling discussion of, of ideas here, but I don't want us to get too far into the weeds on any of these ideas if we're then going to bring in some experts. That's what I'm saying.
And Mr. Chair, uh, my thoughts have been really waiting to see what the dollar value would be of the, the impact, uh, that it had on the county. Because as I understand... Because as I understand that, if we recoup that from this grant, then we can use that money at our discretion.
I think Charlene indicated there would not be an effect that we could defend.
When I look at how they want you to calculate that, I'm not exactly sure that we're going to meet that criteria. That's an unknown as of today, but I'll have Linda and one of her staff work on those calculations. But I, the way that I read that, I don't know that we've had a significant enough of a hit.
Right. I think the theory I had anyway was if we could isolate different streams, some of them would clearly show declines, copper production, for example. But Charlene has found that we probably can't isolate those different streams. We have to look at the overall, in which case we can't demonstrate a significant enough decline to get money.
So the way that it reads is you should, I can't talk today either, should calculate revenue on an entity-wide basis, county-government-wide basis. You can't use projections as a reduction in revenue. And you have to, you look at four different points in time as to where you were, and then plug it into their steps for calculating that lost revenue.
Thanks for checking it out. So I don't think we have that possibility.
The reason I'm laughing, just so you know, is she's reading, she's writing, and you ask a question, and she pops an answer. I can't multitask like that. I would have said, can you repeat it, so?
Functioning A D D, we say.
I'm like, okay. You know, and one thing to, you know, and I know this is a hard decision for me too, but I know that the hospital came up. But I think too that, you know, we have done a lot with the capital improvements to the hospital, the money that's come in, giving the $420,000 there if this is approved, and whatever you guys think for two ambulances. You know, I sort of look at it, we have so many things and so many other projects also for Grant County that, you know, we need to be a little cautiouser to and probably get some of this Grant County stuff done, and then maybe look at that towards the end of it. Because, you know, I did think of the hospital through this, but $420 is a lot of money. And not only that, the 2.5 that was given for the roof, then you have the labor and delivery we have for, what was it on the?
$200,000 equipment.
The medical equipment. So I think we've done, I think we've done great in there. And I think our legislators and governor and all that have really helped. So, you know, when I look at this, is what can we really do for Grant County? Because they also deserve some of this stuff. And maybe towards the end, we can think of what's left over, and we're done exploring certain things, I think we might go down that road. That's just my opinion, but.
So I have a couple of questions from fellow commissioners about specific possible projects. I would like to know how you all feel about the broadband idea, which is, you know, a very large chunk of the 3.1 million that the manager put together. And something that's not on our list, but that we can do if we have qualified census tracts, is direct support to families in need, be it food or rental assistance or utilities assistance. There's actually a third I want to throw out, and that's the behavioral health. We're allowed to spend money on programs to address behavioral health problems that have been exacerbated by the COVID crisis, which I believe are significant. So I just wanted to see if you all are thinking along those lines as well.
You know, I can answer, I can start. The broadband, to me, is probably something that we really need, especially in the changing times that we have. You know, students at home, you know, people working from home. And I think, you know, things will change. But I think, my thinking around the broadband is that a lot of these bigger companies, and I know there's some, I forgot who, which companies, maybe Amazon, somebody like that, they're starting to build again. But I think eventually, some of these companies started noticing that they're saving money by employees working out of home. And the way we're starting or we're thinking of attracting things into Grant County, I think that's only going to be beneficial for us and for a future trying to attract these people to come in and start doing something from there, especially our students and all that. You know, as far as food, I'm on board with that. Behavioral health, I mean, I'm big on that, you know. I look at, one of my biggest things is, and I've mentioned it before, has been, and I wish he was on here, but I can work on that down the road, what you guys think. But, you know, El Fujo, you know, they provide a lot of great services. I think that goes partly with behavioral health also. I think giving them money has always been, you know, one of my things. Because when we look at, in the presentations we've had, and last time we were here, we saw what law enforcement is always on the arrest side. On this end, it's trying to get these people help, putting them in, trying to break the chain. And they have a leeway to get in there. So I would really love to see the Fujo get something, because I think that's part of the behavioral health piece. But I think if you go further, there is a lot of behavioral health that we need to start working on. Because if you look at the news every day, the things that are happening, those people aren't right. They need help. And I think this would be a great opportunity also to try to help them with some of this.
Mr. Chair, I am on board with broadband. I would just like to have maybe some, somebody from W N M come to see if they have broadband available. Because not just our fiber capacity, but they have to have the fiber in to be able to access that. And I know that in today's world now, what COVID caused is going to come to stake. I was, been so surprised that so many people looking for employment, but it's primarily at home, internet. You know, my own family is in there. So I would be, because I know they have to have the fiber to be able to access the higher speeds. But they have to, they have to have the higher speeds available to come into that. So I would just want some questions into that. Now, certainly, that 5G would be beneficial to W N M. So I would want to see what, because we're talking about giving them a lot of money, you know, to benefit not only the consumers, but the company itself. So I just want to have a discussion over that, okay? And last night, I was in the hospital, in the emergency room, till early this morning, and I saw firsthand, you know, the behavioral health needs, you know, that comes. So one of my only problems is how can we really access something without having that needed psychiatrist onboard? And now, if people were to bring us some kind of plan, that would be certainly amenable to talk about all that, you know? Because it is, it is a great need. And in, as we're looking into COVID, people being home spiked, you know, domestic violence, which is certainly, you know, something that El Fujo saw. So I would really, I'd really be amenable to look into any of that. The other part of my plan would be at some project, the urgent need of a project, let's talk about North Hurley. Now, is that need more urgent than, you know, a plan for somewhere else? So looking at the urgency of the needs that we have out there. So that would be what I would like.
Can I, go ahead, or I was gonna, Commissioner Billings, do you have any thoughts?
I'm asleep.
You don't have broadband?
Go ahead, Commissioner, words.
So I'm totally on board with the broadband. Although I don't know what I'm on board with. I would like to have some additional discussion about what exactly, you know, installing 12 miles of fiber would be, you know, what is, I'd like more details on that. I think the El Fujo thing is covered in the address negative economic impacts. And I agree that that's a, that it's a big need and a big part of the behavioral health thing. Before we talk more about what we would do around the behavioral health piece, so we don't have to encumber this money, the deadline to encumber this money is the end of 2024, so we don't have to make a decision on every penny in the next week. And I would like to wait and see what the study that we're going to, I don't know, commission to have done, whatever you want to say, around the crisis intervention and, you know, the mental health system in Grant County. I think that will give us a lot more direction than we have now about what it is that we need to address. But without a doubt, there's an incredible amount of COVID-related mental behavioral health and substance use issues that we need to address. And then on the family assistance piece, one of the things that that I have been talking about a fair amount with people, and certainly with folks that are involved in food distribution and related services, is that people actually are doing pretty well right now in terms of food-related assistance. There is, you know, the state has greatly increased and maintained the increases in food stamp eligibility and the amounts that you can get, that sort of thing. What people are struggling with is rent, back rent, you know, non-food-related things. And an example of that is, one of the things that the commons is focusing on is hygiene products. You know, toilet paper, laundry soap, all those kinds of things are very expensive, not covered by food stamps, you know? So we're really looking at, you know, expanding what we see as those services. And there are areas in that realm where people are falling through the cracks. Back rent is one of the ones that I'm really thinking about. And what people do is, even like on utilities, you know, we have a state law that says that you cannot turn off somebody's utilities between November and March. And so what people do is, when they live paycheck to paycheck and every penny counts, oh, I don't have to pay my utilities, then I'll get my car fixed, or I'll go to the doctor, or whatever, and then come March, they owe those five or six months in utilities. And, you know, and then boom, they get shut off because they suddenly can't pay them. So I think I'm really in favor of doing family assistance stuff, and I'm in favor of taking our time, not a lot of time, obviously, because it's time-sensitive, but really understanding what the needs are and meeting the actual needs.
You brought up a good point, is because when people live paycheck to paycheck, some people's mentality is, well, they can save that money now for, but it doesn't work that way. It just doesn't.
There's always a car repair or a, yeah. So I'm just, I'm going to go out on a limb here a little bit on the broadband conversation. And, you know, some of my fellow commissioners mentioned things like, you know, how many more people are looking for work online, you know, that things are changing. You know, a lot of, a lot of places that did Zoom meetings because of COVID haven't gone back to non-Zoom meetings because they're pretty darn convenient and, you know, that kind of stuff. And so I think the demand for broadband and, you know, for lone eagles, that's an expression that is used out there in the big world for people that can live anywhere and make their living online. That is definitely the kind of people that we're trying to attract to Grant County. One of the things I think we need to really be cognizant of is a person who's making their living online versus a child who can't go to school any other way other than on Zoom, you know, those two households can't pay the same price for broadband. You know, I have broadband with no television, and my monthly Comcast bill is $125 a month. And when we're talking about low-income families and families that are struggling, that is a huge amount of money to pay to get enough bandwidth for their children to have a reasonable school experience.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, so we've been over here educating ourselves on census tract. We have one census tract, it's rather large. But as I'm skimming through this, it appears that only certain services are available if they're in the qualified census tract. So it might not be countywide that you're able to do those things. And then back to the broadband, would you like for me to invite the G M from W N M to be, if he's available, to come talk about their proposal at the work session?
Yes, I will.
And I had another question, and it escaped me.
Can I ask you a question? Yeah, okay, there's one of the questions I have. Where is that one qualified census tract? It means they're poor.
Downtown.
In other ways, it means they've got a high indigenous population. It's downtown?
Well, I was quite shocked when.
Boston.
Well, that's shocked.
Hoover Hill, that area.
Hoover Hill, I get, yeah. All of.
Yeah.
There's some high in territory in there. That's weird.
So when you, when you bring up qualified census tract for Grant County of Mexico.
That's what shows up.
That's what it shows up. So we're madly texting for some.
9644, okay. Thank you, Charlene, for looking that up.
What about all the unincorporated areas? They're really a lot.
We know that there are a lot more poor places than that.
No kidding?
So now I'm even more confused because that's not what I was thinking about.
Yeah, maybe it's qualified as an investment zone or something because the city passed some, could it be the wrong kind of qualified?
So that's what we're trying to figure out is what do they mean by qualified census tract? But when you ask.
You might, you might have a homework assignment rather than here. When you invite W N M C's G M, could you ask, it's a he, right?
Yes.
Could you ask him to be prepared to answer questions related to what Commissioner Salas brought up, which is that I'm somewhat skeptical of providing public money to put in an asset that will then be used by a private enterprise to make profit. I'm less skeptical if it comes with a public good, like the broadband will be at a subsidized rate, something like that, or the county maintains ownership and leases the line or something. So if he could answer some of those economic questions, that would be great.
So he and I talked a little bit about that, and I don't believe he has those answers, neither do I at this point. The idea is that you're providing, you are providing funding to provide this infrastructure for your citizens. I don't know exactly what that looks like. And I'm not sure that any of us counties know exactly what that looks like at this point of how. I mean, I know there's several that are looking at broadband. I don't believe that the county has any business owning any more utilities. I think that's a bad idea personally. I don't like that idea at all, that you own it and lease it, and then that gets really messy and then. But I understand where you're coming from, and that's one of my questions, is exactly how do you do that? Because we're not going to find one local government that builds its own broadband infrastructure. I mean, we just don't do that. So I don't know exactly what that piece looks like, neither does Mr. Metzler. He and I talked about that. So this is going to be one of the more, if you decide you want to pursue this, this is going to take a little bit. this is going to take a little bit more research to figure out how we do this. And the other thing that slipped to my mind a few minutes ago is there is a program out there that provides assistance for low-income people for, I think it's called EBB. And you can find it on their website, that provides assistance for.
Rent.
Internet and, I think it's just internet, but it, it provides like a flat fee. I don't know all the details, but there is a program out there and I think it's called EBB.
Yeah, residents have to be close to the line already. That was, one constituent wanted to participate and couldn't, because they're too far from the line.
I know a lot of people.
I'm sure there's more than the one.
So, and then I think that was maybe one of the reasons they were looking, because I did tell them that it has to be underserved or, either underserved or, you know, not served at all. And I think that is maybe what led them to this particular project. But I will contact him to see if he's available on, if he's not available on Tuesday, is it okay that I throw out both dates, so you can hear from him, the regular meeting on the.
Well, one thing that would be nice in terms of the subsidy piece is maybe if there was, you know, if there was publicly accessible.
Someone's talking to the mic.
What? Oh, publicly accessible broadband, you know, as a result of this partnership, like. I don't know what that would look like, but maybe all of downtown Silver City is free or, you know, all of Bear. I mean, there's a million ways that communities are doing that across the country.
Yep, some of them violate Charlene's preference.
Commissioner Billings, do you have anything?
Uh, no, thank you. Yeah, I'm having a little, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Sorry, I'm having difficulty. Yeah, so I'm like the rest of you, I'd like to know a little bit more about the broadband. I'm glad that we have time, that's really a relief. I think we have a lot of time to gather information and make good choices on how we set this mic. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else on this discussion?
I guess not.
Just sit back, learn, get some answers and move forward. Good with that?
Good.
You good with that, Commissioner Billings?
So is one, I'm sorry, Billy. Is one of the things we're asking the manager to do, to prepare an RFP for the kind of consultation services and maybe project, special project coordination services that we discussed earlier on are being provided to Doñana? Because I'm not sure we made that clear. Is that something you took from our earlier discussion, Charlene? No, let's make that clear.
I thought you were going to talk about that more, so yes, I would need for you to be a little more clear. I missed that.
So can we make that decision on Tuesday after I bring to the board the information?
That works for me.
Probably, but all our action items will be Thursday, so we can do it Thursday, right? Since it's a work session, we can discuss it probably more.
Okay.
And then vote on, or do whatever Thursday.
Okay.
Is that good, Charlie?
I don't think I have any to listen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, no problem, it's good, good discussion. All right, so we're done with discussion of this. We can move on to, okay, moving on to the next items, going to be an executive session in accordance with NMSA 1978, 10-15-1, H2. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
A second?
Second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Brown, Chairman Ponse, Commissioner Salas, Commissioner Billings, are you all aware you're entering into executive session?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Okay, coming, if I can have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
And second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Salas, discussion. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, we're out of executive session. Just let the record reflect that only matters were discussed pursuant to NMSA 1978, 10-15-1, H2, and that no action was taken. Thank you. Commissioners' reports, Commissioner Edwards?
None.
Commissioner Brown?
None.
Commissioner Salas?
None.
Commissioner Billings?
No, sir, nothing.
Commissioner Ponse?
None.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Salas, discussion. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.